Good information from the candidates. We are going to do city council first. And the way it's gonna work is each council member is sitting in alphabetical order. We're gonna start down there with Amy. She's gonna come up, she'll draw question number out of the bowl. She'll let Judge Wood know what her number is. He'll read the question. And then she'll have three minutes, or all of them will have three minutes, to answer that question. As soon as they're finished, they'll go back and sit down. And we'll do the same thing through all five of them. At the end, they'll have an opportunity to answer one of the questions that the other, one of the other candidates has, if they choose to do that. They don't have to do that. But if they would like to answer another question, they can certainly do that. They'll have two minutes to answer that question. And then they'll sit down. We'll take a little bit, a little break in between, and then we'll bring the school board members up, and we'll do the same thing. So hopefully you have, you get some good information. Maybe you can find out some information about some candidates you don't know. And hopefully it's an educational process for you. So we'll go ahead and get started. And while they're working on the mics, we'll just talk loud. So Amy, if you wanna come up, then you'd be first.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for attending. It's heartwarming to see so many people who aren't interested in their local politics. My name is Amy Byers. I've been a resident of Forney for the past 10 years. I grew up in a town called Naperville, Illinois. It's about 30 miles west of Chicago. I met my husband there, raised my daughter there. We all graduated from the same high school. Our love story was even featured in the February 2005 Real Simple magazine. I've worn many hats in my life. I've been self-employed, and I ran my own janitorial cleaning service. I've been a general manager, and I've trained hundreds of employees in a national restaurant chain. Most recently, I've worked in real estate as a licensed Realtor. Ever since we've moved here, I've volunteered for something to better our community. Currently, I work with the Fox Hollow Homeowners Association and the Citizens on Patrol to be their eyes and ears for our dedicated police force. I decided to get into this race because I feel it's time to get things done. It's time for smart decisions for our community, and it's time to work together. Smarter voting and smarter decisions are a win for everyone. This position does require attendance. This position does require commitment. And if you can't show up, you shouldn't sign up. This town deserves more than what has been given out of our elected officials. We deserve a council that can work together without special interests and without compromises. This is what I bring to the seat as a new city council member. So it's time for transparency, it's time for change, and it's time for the citizens to come first. If I am fortunate enough to be elected to your city council, the position will not be taken for granted, and I will work for the betterment of our entire community every day. I'm asking for your vote. I'm Amy Byers. Thank you.
Alrighty. She has drawn question number one, and I will talk as loud as I can. And question number one for you is, what would be your solutions for traffic flow considering Forney's projected growth?
Three minutes.
Got three minutes.
I am, being that I am new to politics, I am not completely familiar with the workings of Tech Dot within the city. I would love to have a better working relationship with Tech Dot, have them understand us more. Also be able to have different traffic studies. As if all of you have been on 548 and 1641, Tech Dot says there is no traffic problem. I'm pretty sure that everyone you, every one of you would have a different opinion of that. I am hoping that the city would also take control of more streets as they're doing with Bodart. I think that that is a good thing to do. I'm just not really happy with the amount of roads that somebody who doesn't live in our community has control over.
Just so that you know what we're going to do now, if any of the candidates that are here that would like to respond to question number one, you will have that opportunity. It's not mandatory, but you would have two minutes to also respond to that same question. And the question was, what would be your solutions for traffic flow considering Forney's projected growth? Would any of you like to add anything or say anything in that regard? Okay?
I'll speak.
Okay. Go ahead.
You need to do it one time here. One time. You need to do it one time.
I think I'll wait then, because there might be a better question.
Okay. And I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
If next candidate would come up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Corey McGee. I'm the current incumbent for Place One City Council. I was appointed back in December when Mr. Hobbs moved out of city limits. And you have to live in the city limits to be on the council. And I was fortunate enough to be given the opportunity to serve the citizens of Forney by being appointed. And I'm blessed by that opportunity. And, you know, there's been a lot of attention on what's going on the last three months. I came in at a good time. And the best is in the future. So I'll start off by, I was born in Dallas, grew up in Mesquite, graduated in 1996 from North Mesquite High School. Moved here in 2006. At the time, we had one son, Trenton. He's now 12. And since we moved here, we've had a younger one, Dylan. He's eight. Both are very involved in sports. They play multiple sports. Since Trenton was four, about eight years ago, I've coached sports, sometimes multiple sports in one season. I've coached soccer, baseball, football, many years. And for the last five years, I've served as the director of baseball for Forney Youth Baseball. We've seen the numbers grow from around 500 when I first came on the board, and now there's over 1,000, almost 1,500 annually that play. But I will say that there's a lot of attention going on right now about what's happening in Forney. There's not, to me, they're not problems, they're growing pains. There's a big difference between problems, Dallas, Baltimore, Chicago, they have problems. Forney doesn't. Forney does have growing pains. Traffic, zoning, annexation, extending the water district, that is growing pains, that's not problems. But I look forward to serving you the next two years, as I don't have an opponent, and I'm blessed, and thank you.
He has drawn number two question. And that question is, is how would you enhance the downtown visitor's experience?
Downtown visitors first. Within the last two or three years, I will say there has been some restaurants and some retail. You have Mama's Daughters, you have Crumbs, you now have the Spelman History Museum, you got Stuart Title moving in. And I know there's a couple vacant spots. And those spots are, you know, they're not abundant. We have to take care of what goes in those spots. You do want traffic, not just during business time, but you do want evening traffic. That's where the restaurants come in. And, you know, to me, I'd like to leave it up to the voters if there was to be another alcohol-related business come down. The one that came up last week, that wouldn't work. There's a boundary for a reason. There's a wet/dry line. And, but I think in the future, if there's another alcohol-related business, I'd like to see it go to a vote.
Mark, you're up.
I would like to once, I would like to also thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank you, Billy Ford.
A little louder.
Okay.
A little louder.
Kinda holler. Okay. Alright. I have no problem doing that. I'd like to thank the chamber for putting on tonight's event, for everybody to have a chance to meet the candidates. For you, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Mark Safford. I've lived here in Forney. This will be my ninth year. I am the co-owner of Lawn Lab, which I'm sure a lot of you have probably seen our trucks all over town. I'm married to my beautiful wife, Karen, who's my best friend. We have four wonderful girls, Farrah Macy, Alexis, Abby, and Victoria. I'm originally from a small rural town in Wood County, Winsboro, Texas, and moved to Dallas in 1990. For the first seven years of my professional career, I worked in the telecom industry until the debacle in 2000, in which I went through an unexpected layoff that pretty much forever changed the path and direction that I would follow. And it really was a journey. I will tell you, in 2000, if the company I was working for wouldn't have been bankrupt, I'd probably still be working in telecom. But I became so disenfranchised with the corporate environment that I took a leap of faith and decided to go out and start with the assistance of my business partner. We started the service company Lawn Lab. In 2001, we launched our company with a vision to compete against corporate conglomerates such as Trigg Green and Scotts. And here we are 15 years later, Forney being home, and we just successfully launched our second service center in Wiley. Now, I will tell you, it was not a pretty sight in Wiley, Texas, this morning. Our facility in our building, which we have three suites out there, there was not a window left in our building out there. So I would ask each and every one of you for your prayers for us to get that facility back, not only for us, but for the three other tenants that are there as well. As this election gets closer, you know, I just wanna take a moment to thank all the people that I've personally had a chance to meet through this process. And in 15 years, as our company has grown, I've had an opportunity to really meet a lot of fine people here in the city of Forney. But once I threw my name in the hat to run for city council, those relationships expanded to some of the business leaders here in this community. And one of the biggest things I have been intrigued by is what goes in the voters' minds during the electoral process when deciding who they'll support. I've met a lot of people in which I've garnered their support, along with some that have just simply replied, "With all due respect, we wish to still support the incumbent Mrs. Penn." And I cannot have much more respect than that for the electoral process. When looking at the current state of affairs for our city and what the community faces, it's inevitable with tremendous, with the tremendous growth that's on the horizon, along with the pain that comes along with it from an infrastructure standpoint. It is imperative at this time that the leadership steps up to the forefront and owns what they've been elected to do, which is to ensure that these changes we face and decisions that will be made are for the long-term prosperity of Forney. And it continues to hold the values in which I, along with other citizens, made to call Forney our home.
Your time is up. Is that correct?
Time's up. Okay. So we can't go beyond that?
Alrighty. Next question is question number five. And this is, is what do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the city of Forney? Capital projects would be like infrastructure projects, roads, sewer lines, streets, water lines, whatever.
Well, Bruce, that's a, that's a good question. And that's obviously at the most recent city council meeting that we had. Water and providing that precious commodity to the citizens is a hot topic right now, especially for the residents in Greyhawk. I was not privy, nor was I aware, of the astronomical prices that they were paying for their water out there. So I concur with the mayor and his vision, along with the council and a lot of aspects of, we gotta put our collective minds together and see what we can do from a water standpoint, not only for the residents of Greyhawk, but with the Win Jackson project that's gonna be coming in, and for the years to come. So there's a lot of things that are coming up there that, there's gonna be some hard decisions that are gonna have to be made. There's gonna be a lot of expenses that are going into it. But I think Forney, if you look at the surpluses that we've had in our budgets the last couple of years, I think we're prepared to do what needs to be done for the citizens. Infrastructure, as far as the roads, Bruce, I know Amy talked about it. It's been a hot topic. I was kidding with my wife the other night. They had mentioned it, Mary, a while ago, prior to this starting. You can't go to Brookshire's, you can't go to Walmart, you can't go to Kroger. If you're asked to go get simply a jug of milk or a loaf of bread, I always tell my wife, "It's gonna take me about an hour and a half to get back." So that's a pressing issue. But if I was fortunate enough to be elected to the council, Tech Dot would know who I am, 'cause I would be a Forney, whatever representative that we talk to within their organization, 'cause I don't believe any study that they presented to the city of Forney. And I don't see how anybody here can agree with any study that Tech Dot. That cannot be the only source that's dependent upon. So I just think we gotta work harder when it comes to Tech Dot. There's no reason to wait later when it's needed now. I don't have, I don't know why we have to wait for the infrastructure changes when it is just absolutely imperative that lane expansions, it needs to happen.
Hi, my name is Mary Penn, and I'm going to apologize ahead of time because I have allergies. So I'm trying to speak loud enough, but in case if my voice starts sounding mousy, we'll explain why. Thank you for being here this evening. I am married to John. I have five kids, and we have eight grandkids. They're all being raised in Forney, except for one. I'll always know how long I've lived here because I moved here, and five days later, my daughter Lindsay was born, and she turned 33 in December. So I can't say that I'm a Forneyite because I didn't grow up here, but I've been here long enough to know and to see the changes that have happened to Forney. And I, and I love Forney. I wanna say that we definitely have our challenges, and they haven't been easy. But by far, I will say, and I have always said, that Forney is the greatest place on earth to live, and I wouldn't wanna live anywhere else. So I'm committed here. After my kids got old enough and got out of school, I wanted to be involved, and I wanted to serve. I'm not a politician. I'm a public servant, but I've had to learn to be a politician, to be a public servant, if that makes any sense to you. I don't particularly like politics, but obviously I must be competitive because somehow I always managed to have an opponent and seem to hang in there. But I'm energetic, I'm enthusiastic. What you see is what you get. I speak from the heart, and I give it everything that I have. I do my homework, I do my research, and I make my decisions based on the information that I get. I think we have a lot of exciting things that are ahead of us, and I'd like to continue serving you. Thank you.
Alright, and we're working on the, working on the microphone. Obviously, it's not quite fixed yet, but...
Could you hear me? Could you hear me?
All right. Mary has drawn question number six. And we'll read that. As a city council member, from whom will you seek advice on input in weighing key decisions or important decisions?
Who would I seek input on important decisions? That's really a good question, because the first thing that I do is I go to my Heavenly Father, and I pray about it, and I, and I seek input from him. It comes from the heart. The next thing that I do is I go to people who are knowledgeable in that department, and I also go to people for their input as the citizens, because you guys are my boss. So I wanna know what you think. If it's something that, it needs a professional, though, I go to the professionals. I first of all seek the Lord, then the professionals, and then the citizens. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robbie Powers. I am seeking reelection to the city council, Place Three. I am a long-term Forney resident. I work in the healthcare field. I work in a Level One trauma center. And being a servant is what I do every day. And I would like to contribute to the citizens of Forney in the capacity of a city council member. I would like to recognize my dad. This time last year, he was in the hospital having open-heart surgery, and I'm so glad he's still here with me today. He's one of our big, one of my biggest supporters, and I just wanna thank everybody for their support over the years. Thank you.
Question number four. That question is, what one part of city government would receive more attention if you're elected? What one part of city government would receive more attention if you're elected? Well, there's obviously several parts of city government, as you are well aware. You have, obviously, public safety, the fire department, police, you have the judicial civil judges. You also have the, all the different other types of departments that, which one of those would be the one that you'd wanna pay the most attention to?
The part of civil government that I would like to pay most attention to would, of course, be safety. Making sure that our citizens are safe, making sure that we have the correct amount of police and fire to help our growing, oh yeah, that's better, to help our growing city, because as so many of the other candidates on the panel have pointed out, that our city is going through growing pains. But we wanna keep our citizens safe. So that would be the first thing that I would try to keep my focus on, is to keep the citizens safe.
Alright, here's, here's what we're gonna do now, and hopefully we won't get this confused. After all of the candidates have now answered a question, and so what we're going to do is ask each of the candidates that have already spoken if they would like to answer one of the previous five questions that have been asked. And you will have a two-minute time limit to answer the second question. Whichever one of the five questions that were asked, please, and I can read those off if you would like for me to do. If you're like me, you may not remember all of them. Or you may, you may wanna just say which one you want, if you can get it remembered. So, Wilson, whoever comes first is welcome to start.
I'm gonna answer the same question as Powers had. There's a huge position open right now in the city of Forney, the city manager's office. Mr. Brooks resigned back in January, and he was here almost 10 years, or a little bit over 10 years. And, you know, I will say that Forney's, during his tenure, Forney grew a lot, and have a lot of respect for him for that. But he's gone, and there's gonna be someone else that's gonna fill that spot in the next, you know, probably three to four months. It's about a six-month process to find that city manager. We currently have Mr. Daniels, who's doing a great job, by the way, in spot, in place now. And, you know, that's the one position that I think is the most important decision of the next year.
Can you have the rest, though?
I would also like to answer Robbie's question. I think with the growth that we have in this town, not only is it safety important, but code enforcement, we will not be able to keep our property values where they need to be or increase it when we continue to let code enforcement fall by the wayside. I think what do we have, one person who does that, and it just isn't enough for our size community. So I would like to see a little bit more emphasis put onto that position.
Seems like yours was the most popular question, Robbie.
Public safety. You know, it seems every year when budgets are reviewed, there's slashes across the board. But I think that public safety, when it comes to our police officers and our firefighters, those are ones that we need to always ensure that they're given the support and the funds that they need. 'Cause as this community grows, in the last 10 years, especially when I've been here, it's changed a lot. It's the diversity of this community. You know, we face a lot of challenges, but I just think with our law enforcement and our fire, we cannot ever subject the citizens by not making sure that we give our police officers and our firefighters what they need, that's to support our community.
Can you hear me? No, obviously wasn't the best question. There are so many moving parts to this, and to tie it all into one thing, ever since I have been on the council, I have been fighting to have our taxes reduced. But not just to have our taxes reduced, we cannot go without running the city and our fire protection, our police protection. We've got to have all those things. In the, in the six budgets that I've been on council, the first budget I approved for the taxes to go up because the property values went down, and we had to sustain what we had with our police and fire. We had, we had to run our services the way that we have. The next two times I voted against the budget, I did not like the taxes. I don't like the taxes going up. We've, we've got to find a way to be creative, take care of the needs that we have, and have our taxes reduced. So I have fought to have our taxes reduced. The last two times, our taxes have been reduced a little bit. And if we continue to reduce our taxes a little bit and find the creative ways to keep the safety and running our city in a manner that we need to, and fixing our roads, our roads are a big thing, we're on target with, we're behind the curve, but we're on target, I'm working on that. So there's a, there's a whole lot of moving parts, and it's all important. But if you put it all together, and you find creative ways to make it happen, and if we have a council that works together, and the ideas we have, we're gonna do it. Thank you.
I would just like to elaborate on the infrastructure question. No doubt that infrastructure is also important. In the newer parts of Forney... In the newer parts of town, it's a little bit easier for when builders come in, when new subdivisions come in, or new phases come in. Those roads are normally pretty nice. You have the correct lighting, you have everything that you need there, but also we need to probably come up with a better plan to address the older parts of town, where the infrastructure is kind of rough, some of those older streets like Trinity and those areas. I know that our guys have been working pretty hard on that, Chris Ness and the Public Works guys, I always say hats off to them, because any time that I see a road or I see a big potholes somewhere that needs to be repaired, I'm definitely calling him, and their, his guys are always right on it. So no credit from us, but all the credit to them, but also to try to focus on our other, our older parts of town. That would be great.
We'll now have two minutes for closing remarks, and I believe we'll just follow the path that we first started from the far end, just coming back this way, and if you'd like to come on up, and then we'll, this will conclude when the last, when it's finished, Ms. Powers, this will conclude the first part of our program tonight. So we have two minutes.
I just want to again thank you all for coming today. I feel that this was a very important step in the process of making our government work for us. I am beyond thrilled to be living in Forney and have always been in love with this town since the moment we moved in. I'm looking forward to growing with it and improving upon the structures that we have now, and I just want to thank you all again for coming.
Last week, Forney garnered a lot of attention, good attention, and this, during this election and during the next year or two, let's build as a community on the positivity that that started. Forney's got a great reputation out there, and my hope is that we continue the positivity and continue the growth, continue the love that the community shares with each other. When a child gets sick, when even an adult gets sick, you see hundreds of people step up and help out, and, you know, it's a, it's a great city to live in, and I'm excited to represent y'all the next two years. Once again, a big...
Once again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. You know, this is all new to me. If you'd have told me six to nine months ago that I would consider running for city council, I would have told, I'd have told a lot of people in this community, "You're crazy," just because of how my time constraints are with being a business owner, being a husband, being a father to my kids, but, you know, there's been a lot of things that's occurred, good and bad. I guess it depends on how you look at it, but I do think Forney is at a crossroads right now, and there's going to be a lot of key decisions that are going to be made within the next six months to a year that's going to provide a landscape that we can go one or two directions. And I would be proud to serve in the city council, and I hope to get everybody's support, to be honest with you. I'm looking forward to it, and just get everybody out there and vote. Thank you.
I want to say thank you that I have... Is this on? Can you hear me? Oh, there you go. It's weird when you're up here, because you, and your ears aren't right. Thank you so much for allowing me to serve you in the past, and I've served so far. This is my third term. I love the city of Forney. I'm excited about the things that are going on. The challenges that we've faced have been quite interesting, but if you can raise teenagers and the challenges that you face with teenagers, you can look at a municipality much like that, and as long as we work together and figure out how to work together in a healthy manner, Forney's still the greatest place on earth to live, and there's a lot of exciting things on the horizon. There will always be important decisions to make, in my eyes, because it's always going to affect somebody. But if you like what I'm doing, if you believe in me, then I would love to continue serving for you. Thank you.
I too would like to thank everybody for coming out. It has been a pleasure, serving the city of Forney for the last couple of years that I've served. I would ask for your vote to be reelected. I too am like Mary. I love Forney. It has been home to me for a very long time. I can remember my mom, we first got here in 19, anyway, but when I first got here, I suffered with asthma as a kid, and I can remember, I've been here that long, when the cotton gin was going, and cotton was going everywhere. The doctor was afraid that we were going to have to move because of all the cotton and everything, and I remember crying to her, saying, "I didn't want to leave Forney. I didn't want to leave Forney," but I did eventually to kind of go off to college and come back and live in my community, and I would just like to continue to serve. I serve at work. I'm a public servant. I've been able to go off on medical missions to Jamaica. I've served the community in Dallas, at the Dallas Health Ministries, just volunteering. I've served the kids in Camp Airways that suffer with asthma. So I'm just a servant all around, and I would just like to continue to serve. Mary hit it right on the head. We do continue to have those growing pains, but I know that we can kind of get over that hump. I mean, I know we've got Tech dot that we deal with, and we have other entities that we have to deal with, but I'm confident as a council that we can do it. Yes, I mean, we can butt heads as a council, that's true, but we're still there to do one thing, and that's to serve the citizens of Forney. Not just our vision, not just the mayor's vision, but the community's vision. That's what we're here to do, and I would just ask that you would continue to support me, and thank you for your vote.
Thank you very much, candidates, and I think all of us in this room, all of you, it's not easy sometimes running for public office, and I think all of us, regardless of who you may be supporting, we owe all of you a big round of applause for at least offering yourself up for public service. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to take about a five-minute break. You can stand, but we have guards at the back. We're not going to let you leave. And, because these candidates will be around at the end of the meeting, and we hope you will take the time to visit with them. That's why they're here tonight. And even though this is a great forum, it's been organized very well, other than the moderator, I think it will be helpful for you if you can talk with them individually about any concern you have. So if you'd like to stand and take a stretch break just for a little bit, we'll get started with the school board candidates in just a moment.